Thank you, Brittany. Welcome to the grand finale of our daytime session. We're glad you're here to join in the discussion about education. I am Tinker Duklo and it's my honor to moderate the Colorado State Board of Education's Third District Debate. We welcome Democratic candidate Ellen Angeles and Republican proxy Lynetta Scholl to the stage. Candidate Wright initially accepted our invitation, but a conflict arose, so Lynetta has agreed by joining us in her stead. Please welcome our candidates. Thank you both for joining us and for your willingness to serve Western Colorado. Before we begin, I am compelled to go over our ground rules. Candidates should focus on ideas, not on personalities. They ought also exhibit the utmost courtesy and avoidance of inflammatory statements. Any disrespectful or attacking speech or profane language will not be tolerated. Candidates may not display a prop of any kind. Candidates must strictly adhere to the time limits of each section of the debate. The moderator reserves the right to cut off a candidate who exceeds the time limit or to redirect a candidate in their remarks if they are not pertinent to the elected office. Do you both agree to these rules?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Additionally, we ask that all audience members also exhibit courtesy and professional decorum during these debates. Limited applause is allowed, but unruly outbursts or disruptions are prohibited, and the debate moderator may penalize a candidate's time if their supporters are unable to maintain decorum. Audience members should also be aware that these debates are being filmed and livestreamed for public viewing. And with that, we'll begin with the opening remarks. A coin toss was conducted backstage, and Ellen Angeles has chosen to begin. Candidate Angeles, you have two minutes for your opening remarks.
Hello, I'm Ellen Angeles, and if you want to find out what I believe, please go to EllenForColorado.com. I want to thank Club 20 in Colorado Mesa University and the Daily Sentinel for this wonderful event, and most importantly, I want to thank you for being here with us and you at home watching. As a teacher of 20 years, I teach my students that half of life is just showing up. Unfortunately, my candidate was not able to show up today, and she's in a proxy. If I look at the past year, the seat that I'm hoping to fill, the gentleman quit the job before the job was over. Today, with my opponent failing to show up, I want you to remember this job interview because it's very important. So I want to tell you a little bit about me. I tell my son every day, my most important jobs are being a daughter, a wife, and a mother, and these are jobs you must show up for. So to tell you a little bit about myself, I was in banking and sales, and I worked for a Fortune 500 company for about 10 years, and then I met a guy in Leadville, Colorado, and I moved here and started teaching. I taught at Colorado Mountain College, and I've taught K through 12 all through the Western Slope. I was able to get my teaching certificate in Gunnison at Western Colorado University, and I was fortunate enough to get a scholarship to get my masters here at Colorado Mesa University. So I want to tell you that when I win this seat, my most important priority is going to be defending public education and making sure that children have the best education that they can have. I, as a community member and a teacher, feel that's so important for us to be involved in our community because our children see what we do and how we treat others, and it's important for our students to realize that they are going to be the next people running our communities. So I will advocate for rural schools, I will listen, I will learn, and I will talk to everyone. It's been a privilege to be here this evening. I hope you will trust me with your vote. My name is Ellen Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Proxy Scholl, you have two minutes for opening remarks.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for allowing us to be able to do this. I want to congratulate Club 20 on quite the organization skills. It was amazing, and I'm sorry I can't shake your hands, I do have a slight cold. I am standing in here for Sherri Wright. She is very tall, thin, and she can walk on six-inch stiletto heels, so I'm by far not her devil. She would like to say that she believes in education, she believes in parental rights, she believes in school choice. On these three things, I stand firm and will not be shaken when I go to the State Board of Education. I will carry these with me and not move on my beliefs. My name is Sherri Wright, and I'm running for the Colorado State School Board of Education. There are three things that you need to know about me. I believe in education, facts, not opinions, not CRT. You will be hearing about inclusion in schools. This means that all students, hearing about inclusion, this means that all students will get the same education, not at the rate of their ability to learn, but at the rate the lowest students learn. Folks, this is equity, not equality. Equality, where every student has the ability to learn at their rate, they will be all, they will all be taught the same material, but at their level. What the student needs is student outcome, not indoctrination. Sherri has 12 years, and 12 years of in education. She's sat on the Modestum and Cortez School Board for 12 years. She's sat on the San Juan Vocational Technical School Board for eight years. She has promoted the PCC College in our community. She has fought strong and hard to save our vocational technical college at the level she has went to legislation and fought for that. She is the mother of two successful children, and she will be there when it counts. She is unable to attend today to personal items.
Thank you. We'll now move into the question and answer portion of the debate. Each candidate will be asked to respond to four questions that have been submitted by Club 20 members and our partners. Each candidate has one minute to respond to each question. The candidate who goes first on each question will have an opportunity to also offer a 30-second rebuttal to the other candidate's response to that particular question. The candidate who went first in opening remarks will offer the first response to the first questions. So Candidate Angeles, this will be you, and your question is, and actually, audience members, a note for you all, we ask that you continue to demonstrate your decorum and courtesy. Limited applause is allowed, but unruly outbursts or disruptions are prohibited, and if the debate moderator may penalize the candidate's time if their supporters are unable to maintain decorum. Audience members should also be aware that this continues to be filmed. Question number one. What would you identify as the most pressing need in K through 12 education in Colorado? What are your priorities and guiding principles for Colorado's education system? Please tell us how you plan to address these issues.
Thank you. The pressing issues that are always for education are funding, funding, funding. Our schools are underfunded, and our teachers are underpaid. 20 years ago, our teachers were 45th lowest paid in the country. Now, with cost of living and housing, it's 50. We deserve a good education, and do our children. So one of the things that I am very good at is talking with different people and getting people to come together for solutions that benefit groups. And being on the State Board of Education, one of the things that I will do is talk to different people and get different ideas. I've been lucky enough to travel all over CDE III and talk to schools in Pueblo and in Grand Junction and Montezuma, and we're rural schools, and we're a little different than the Front Range, and a lot of our solutions are going to be unique to us, just like we are unique. So I pledge to help bring those ideas together so that we can provide the best education we can for children. Thank you.
Proxy Scholl, would you like me to restate the question?
Yes, ma'am.
What would you identify as the most pressing needs in K through 12 education in Colorado? What are your priorities and guiding principles for Colorado's education system? Please tell us how you plan to address these issues.
And I will answer in Sherri's word. Her priority is strong, basic skills for our children. We are learning that, we are failing in that. 40.8% of Colorado children met or exceeding reading expectations. We want to see that at 90% at least. We need to address this and look at this. We need to identify it early. We need to raise our standards, not lower our standards. We need to be reaching for those goals. And Sherri does a great job. She was my regional director for CASB, and we worked together with CASB and came up with some different policies and funding for our education. She is in-depth on curriculum. We work together on choosing curriculum and making sure it fits all needs of all children. It is equal, not equity, that we need to...
Time.
Sorry.
30-second rebuttal.
So one of the things that you talked about is strong, basic skills, and I believe that the strong, basic skills come to, whoops, I'm watching the timer, I want to make sure I'm okay?
I think it's...
Okay.
Should be one.
Sorry. It's a rebuttal. So one of the things that you've talked about is strong, basic skills, and one of the concerns I have is, one of Sherri's talking points is the American birthright standards. And so when we're not teaching traditional values that go along with what people throughout the state of Colorado have come together with the Colorado Department of Education, that concerns me. We want to give children accurate, true history.
Question two. Proxy Scholl, you'll start us off with this one. Because approximately 80% of the population resides outside of the Western Slope, most Western Colorado school districts have a perception that their needs are not understood and are often unmet. What would you do to ensure the needs of schools in the Third Congressional District are heard and addressed?
So working with Sherri, I think you've heard Clark Craig talk about the Southwest Educational Collaborative, and we began that program a long time ago, and it's just taking off now. We have to reach out to each school and see what their successes are and what their failures are and how we can approach that. And through that, we've come up with PLCs, sorry, Professional Learning Communities, and with the project-based learning. We're big advocates for that, and that seems to bring the community together as well as the students and the teachers. It gives them a real goal to reach.
Thank you. Candidate Angeles.
So on the Western Slope, we do have some deficiencies, but we also have some great benefits. Our communities are very involved with our rural schools, and giving our children the opportunity to volunteer in their communities, to be part of their communities, not spending an hour on a bus to and from school in some areas, we have some great opportunities for our children. One of the things that I will definitely do is to show up and share about the great things that happen in our communities, and they are different whether it's Pueblo or Durango or Montrose. We have many things like career pathways now. We also have where students can get credit for college. There are so many opportunities for our children to be successful in the trades or in college or starting their own small businesses. I see that in Montrose, where I'm from. It was so cool to purchase a car recently for one of my fourth-grade students, and his salary is as high as most starting school teachers, and he has great insurance. So there are so many opportunities on the Western Slope for our children.
30-second rebuttal.
A rebuttal, correct. Yes, Sherri is very involved in the CTE programs and apprenticeship programs. She is willing to put the effort forth to bring those programs into the CDE III realm and work on policies that will be, make those more attainable for each one of our communities and our districts. That is how we're going to be successful in rural Colorado because each community is so different, the standard, basic CTE programs do not fit all.
Thank you. Question three. Club 20 believes the quality of our education system directly impacts the strength and expansion of the Colorado economy. How would you address Colorado's skills gap so that more employers remain, expand operations, and invest in our state?
Thank you for that question. It was great last night talking to everybody at Club 20, and I learned something interesting about Club 20. It started as a small group to pave rural roads, and now I look at what can happen in our districts, in these rural areas, where kids can be involved in agriculture, they can be involved in business. There are so many different opportunities for us to help with our students. And internships, I think, are a great way, and also for our communities to volunteer in our schools because we want the partnership of our parents, we want the partnerships of our employees, our libraries. Many trusted adults help us with children, especially when some of our children struggle with homelessness, or hunger, or parents that are working. And so to support that, we need to, as a community, step up and support our schools, and that's what I intend to do, and I see that it will be done in the other communities because we have a lot of people who care about public education. Thank you.
Would you like it again?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Club 20 believes that the quality of our educational system directly impacts the strength and expansion of the Colorado economy. How would you address Colorado's skills gap so more employers can remain, expand operations, and make investments in our state?
We have to work with those employers, with their programs for our young students. We need to learn how to set priorities and set up those stepping stones that, it helps our companies as well as our children, even children in pre. We need to look at that from the top down to pre so that we can get those stepping stones and prioritize. How can we help our economy? Work with your local county commissioners and your house districts and your senate districts to bring that economy function into our small rural communities because our small rural communities cannot, we cannot harbor some of, most of us don't have train or railway access, so we have to figure out how to get those goods and stuff in and out. So maybe we need more transportation. Maybe the children can work on that. They can go out and work in those communities, work with the banking systems, work with whatever we can do to get those funded. Set them up in the governmental process, let them, allow them to work with them.
Time. Okay, and the fourth question, we'll begin with Proxy Scholl. With the passage of SB 24-188, Public School Finance during the 2014 legislative session, do you believe that this will help Western Colorado schools? If so, how will our schools be directly impacted by the change?
Well, Senate Bill 24-188 raised the base level $420 to $8,496, and if anybody's ever looked at that formula, there's four steps that we attain to get our per pupil funding. So in rural communities, they are so diverse, you know, some of those are included language learning, and we have special needs children. So in my community, we have a special needs child that we cannot support, so we have to pay transportation for him to go to Colorado Springs. Sometimes that's not taken into consideration, that's six hours, and we have to pay for that transportation. So the funding formula does not have the equity that it needs to be, or the equality that it needs to have for our rural communities because we have not been addressed in those small rural communities. But it will help us, but we haven't taken into consideration the cost of living raises that we haven't been able to give our employees as well either, so there's a lot of trickle-down. Sorry.
Would you like it repeated?
Please, thank you, Tinker.
With the passage of SB 24-188, Public School Finance during the 2024 legislative session, do you believe this will help Western Colorado schools? If so, how will our schools be directly impacted by the change?
So I'll let you know, about 20 years ago, I was surprised when I was given a credit card slip for Target to say, please support Target because we're going to help donate funding to school districts. And I was so surprised by that because when I look at per pupil funding, it is low, and it's one of the lowest in the country. And if we're 45th or 46th in the country, how are we going to be able to help our kids further their careers when they get out of school? We definitely want to be supporting our schools, and by funding our schools and taking care of our schools, we are going to help our communities because the schools are building our workforce, they're helping our students get ahead in life and have opportunities. So the funding is good that we were able to change some funding, but we still have work to do, and I'm going to help do that because I know, I will ask all the time, is it good for kids? Is it good for public education? Thank you.
30-second rebuttal.
So in rebuttal, I know Sherri and I talked the other day, and she said, you know, I've already been to Governor Polis's office, and she said, I just want to let you know that I'm going to be here when it's important for our children, we need more funding. And he said, well, I guess I plan to see you quite often, and she will do that for us. We have to have that funding, but she has a different process, kind of. She looks to us to help her support that and bring that forth. And as in 2023, we were ranked 38th in funding, and that's before this new formula, sorry.
Thank you. We'll now move into the cross-examination. Each candidate will begin four minutes to ask questions of their opponent on matters relevant to the race or office. Please be reminded that the questions must be pertinent to the office you are running for and should not attack any attacking speech or profane language. I reserve the right to redirect a candidate if their remarks are not pertinent. And we shall begin with Proxy Scholl.
And these questions are directly from Sherri. Her first question is, do you believe biological males have the right to use the girls' restroom and participate in girls/women's sports?
I believe we should follow the rules and laws that we have in our state and our country, and as far as that would go, that doesn't fall on the State Board of Education. That falls on the Colorado High School Academic or Athletic Association, so it's not in our lane, it's for them to decide, and I am a person that follows the law.
How do you feel about school choice?
I feel that in my community of Montrose, we have great school choice. We have public schools, we have private schools, we have charter schools, and we have a lot of folks that homeschool. So I believe that parents have lots of choices.
Do parents have the basic right to know what their children are being taught and what pronouns they are asked to use or be called?
So could you repeat that question because it sounds like two questions?
It is.
Thank you.
Do parents have the basic right to know what their children are being taught? We can begin with that one.
Okay. Yes, absolutely, parents have the right to know what their children are being taught. And if you look at the Colorado academic standards, they show what's being taught, but the most important way to find out what your student is being taught is to have dinner with them and talk about it over the table and to go in and volunteer in the classrooms. As a fifth-grade teacher, I can't tell you how many parents, grandparents, uncles, neighbors, friends, people that would come in and volunteer. So yes, they absolutely need to know what's going on in the schools because a lot of children don't have loved ones that can help them, and so we need many trusted adults for our children as they learn, and they learn from different people. My mother could never teach me to play the piano, but other people could.
And so the second part of that question, Sherri would like to know, is what pronouns, do parents have the right to know what pronouns they are asked, their children are being asked to use or being called?
You know, Lynetta, that's a really good question, and it's something I've been talking with people in Montezuma County and Pueblo and other places. So state law says children should be called what they want to be called. Hopefully, children have a good enough relationship with their parents to talk about this, and hopefully, those parents love their children enough to help them through that.
She doesn't have any more questions, but I would, Sherri and I have talked about banning books in the school libraries, and we are not for that, but we have talked about working on some policies and stuff to rate those books, such as a movie would be rated. Would you be in favor of such a policy?
No.
Okay. And can I ask why not?
Well, I think part of the situation is when I look at things I've heard about Sherri being on the school board down in her community, she did not like a third-grade book and changed a curriculum, and I don't think people realize how much teachers put into a curriculum. So a $750,000 curriculum was gone after two years because of a third-grade book. Ladies and gentlemen, if we can get a third grader to read anything, we should just be really happy. And the book was not inappropriate. People were reading it in the third grade in 1980s and 1970s, so I'm not for banning books. And if parents have that conversation, because if we ban books or we ban people's ideas, you're taking away from other parents, and every parent's opinion and voice is important, but I can't cater a classroom to 28 different parents. So I'm going to trust the experts in our community at the State Board of Education level. Thank you.
And that is time. Now Candidate Angeles will have four minutes to ask questions of Proxy Scholl.
Thank you. Lynette, I know it's not easy to stand in and be a proxy for someone else, so thank you for being a good friend to her. I'm going to ask you the questions that hopefully you'll know the answer to. Her very first priority in her literature is no boys in girls' sports. Why is that her first priority in education?
I don't think that's her first priority in education, but if you've read that somewhere...
On her literature.
I believe that she feels the same way I do because I was part of that era when we worked so hard for Title IX for my girls' education.
Okay, so if I look in her literature, it says, first priority, no boys in girls' sports. I was actually here last night talking to a coach at the college here. I asked him if it was an issue here. He told me it was noise. So that sounds like noise, and it's not putting children first overall. It's a small portion of what we're going to be doing when we get into this important seat.
Well, her priorities are education.
My second question would be, your opponent, I mean, my opponent, said on her literature, she wants parental notification. What is parental notification, Lynette?
And I'm going to have to defer that to Sherri because I'm not, I don't know the context in which, context in which you took that from.
From her flyer.
The parental notification would be if there's any curriculum that is deviated from the standard curriculum, or if there's a program that's going to be introduced...
Okay, can I ask why parental notification is more important than parental involvement? What does she feel, what does she feel about parental involvement?
Pardon, I'm sorry, I didn't finish my answer, excuse me, I didn't finish my answer, so I couldn't hear your question when you talked over me, I'm sorry.
What is her opinion on parental involvement?
We're both very much for parental involvement. That's the best way for us to get the support that we need is to invite our parents into the classroom and into our children's programs and projects.
Okay, so all parents should be able to be involved in the classroom in the schools, is that correct?
Unless there's legal issues.
All parents? Unless there's what?
Legal issues.
Legal issues. I would agree, I wouldn't want someone in the schools that can't pass that law.
No, they should all go through the background check, just like any volunteer does.
So we both agree we'll just keep criminals out of the classroom, but not parents that don't share the exact same beliefs as us?
Beliefs are not, our personal beliefs do not belong in education. Education is education, and it's about the basics.
Okay. One of the things is, when Sherri was on the school board, she had a district accountability committee, which was required by CDE, and only four parents were allowed to be on it. Why not more parents?
I'm sorry, I don't know their policy. In ours, in my district, the policy is very stringent, there's only two on our district accountability.
Only two parents? Wow.
But, but you got two parents, but then we ask for communities, business owners, and we're very small, so I don't know what their policy is on the district accountability when you have a larger community.
All right, the next thing that she talked about was education and indoctrination. So she has talked to some people here in Mesa County, and she said she supports the American birthright standards, but doesn't really understand the Colorado academic standards, so she can't be very sure. Why do you think she's supporting the American birthright standards?
I'm sorry, I will have to defer to Sherri for that because I do not know, I have not asked her that question.
Okay, so the fact that she supports the American birthright standards is in telling people that. We have to remember that teachers are certified by the state of Colorado, so they are required to teach what is with CDE. So she may be want to, want to be aware of that fact, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And you will have to defer to her, and I think we need to allow her to answer that.
Thank you.
She would be better at answering that question.
Thank you, ladies. Each candidate now has two minutes to present closing remarks. Proxy Scholl will go first.
So for Sherri, education is her priority. Children are her priority, as they are mine. We need to give them strong, basic skills. I always tell Sherri the story when I was helping out with tutoring seventh and eighth graders, they did not know their multiplication facts. That made me very sad, and this was just a few years ago, so I understand that we need those strong, basic skills. And I am very proud, and she is proud also, of the fact that we were able to come from COVID, through COVID, and both of our schools are accredited. Both schools have been in turnaround, and together, we worked together with the board and brought those out, so we know what it's like to be on the, on the end of that cycle and bring them forward. She believes in parental rights. Parents have the right to know what their children are reading and what their children are being taught, they need to be engaged in that process. Sherri always encourages parents to attend school board meetings because if you don't know how it's funded, you can't complain about what's not being funded. Our budgets are all tight. We will fight for the funding. We need to fight for the funding and the process of our teachers. I know our teacher salaries are all local, but when you look at that funding formula, it is not equitable over for rural schools. They don't take into account that maybe we don't have all those special needs that get the extra or the LAE, Language Learning, kids. We don't have a lot of those, so that, that formula is not equal. That is not equitable for us. We need to have that with our We need to have that with our legislators and work with our legislators to get that funding corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Proxy Scholl. Candidate Angeles, you have two minutes for your closing remarks.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to be here today, and I consider it an honor to be a public servant and to be a teacher. Some of you learned a little bit about what the State Board of Education does, and I will let you know, this is a position where we work for free. So you have to be very committed to something when you'll work for free. I want you to know, I'm committed to working and making sure that every decision I make goes around, is it good for children and is it good for public education? One of the people I like to think about, because my dad had him as a fan, my dad was a principal, my mom was a teacher, we always went to sports events, we always went to plays, we were always very, very active in our community. My mom had always taught us that people aren't as bad as they are greedy, and there were so many good people at our community, and I'm finding that as I go around CDE III. So I'll think about Lou Holtz, who said, ability is what you're capable of doing. That's what we're teaching kids, to have a strong ability to do what's right. Motivation, determine what you're going to do. I am motivated to represent all of CDE III. And attitude, how well you'll do it. I'll tell you, I have always been someone who's had a positive attitude. I have a go-to attitude. I've worked since I was 13. I delivered newspapers, I was the first girl, and I will deliver for you too. So I just want you to know, I, I thought it was interesting last night, the steak fry, two people that spoke to me, one was Ray Beck, and when I look at Club 20 and how many people it affects and changes, to think it just started from paving roads and it has come to this, that's the way education is. We are paving the way for our children and our futures. And I thought it was interesting to talk to J.J. Fletcher and to see how his life was in Palisade and to see the changes that we make. I look at those two gentlemen, and I see them as 5th grade students in my classroom. And I want you all to look at our children and know, they are the people that are going to be running our community next. I thank you for having me here today. I hope I can get your vote. My name is Ellen Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Angeles. Thank you, Proxy Scholl. Audience, please join me in thanking our participants in today's Colorado State Board of Education for Districts.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.